In time than we do.
Okay.
Not that I agree with that.
Getting around now.
Okay, time is six oh four. We are here for the meeting of the whole this evening. I need just a second to. There we go. I should just burn that page.
I know I should.
I don't. I don't need it.
How are you?
I'm good, are you?
I'm good.
Leanna's brought us candy.
No, I actually picked it up.
She brought herself.
This candy's been here for a while.
Yeah.
It hasn't been refreshed.
And I haven't eaten it all, so that's a plus.
All right.
Help yourself.
Yes, I'll lock down. All right, so. I've already announced time of the meeting and we'll have roll call. John?
Here.
Ben is absent this evening. Brad?
Here.
And myself here. And this evening joining us is our newest member, Brittany. She will be sworn in a little bit later. So, all right, up. And in.
I had to wait for the train. I was on time.
I had the train too. All right. Approval of the meeting agenda this evening? Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make them all. I'll second.
All right, John and Brad. All right. All in favor?
All right.
Hi, all those polls. All right, motion passes. Next one, student staff, community recognition. Christine Martin?
Krista.
Krista? Martin up?
Martin.
Martin. Okay. Grease, okay, exemplary selfishness service to the community and the district by providing support for the Eagles Nest daycare staff through emergency response, debriefing and CPR ADA training. She dedicated her own time and met with staff multiple times and advocated for the purchase and placement of an ADA DE in the daycare facility. Her actions are a great example of, of her dedication and community to the care of the well-being of all of our, in our community. Okay.
Yeah.
Can we have her come to another meeting to do that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we'll plan to do. She, she-
Busy at the concrete.
Right.
Sure, yeah, meet tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, she, she just did a wonderful job of reaching out and wanting to really work with staff, you know, through the medical emergency situation that we had at daycare and met with staff to debrief them and work through just some of the issues that providers have when they've gone through emergency situations. And then also doing retraining and whatnot. And I know we posted a picture of her providing CPR training as well, so. Uh, just-
Okay, next, both of us. So we have Brittany this evening. She's sworn in.
You got this memorized, right?
Me? No. Yes.
Yeah, scared Brit. Made her think she had to have it memorized.
Got to pick on the newbie.
Okay. Raise your hand. I'm Brittany.
I'm Brittany.
Hey, you're going to state your name. Having been elected or appointed to the office of Solon Spring School Board.
I'm having been elected to the office of Solon Spring School Board.
But have not yet entered upon the duties therefore sworn.
But have not yet entered the duties therefore sworn.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities.
And will faithfully discharge said duties of office to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard. All right, thank you. All right.
That was pretty good. All of us have to read the darn thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually they give you the person a copy, but you don't.
Well, it's my first time swearing somebody in. Most times it's the secretary's job.
Oh.
Which we don't have. Which we don't have right now, so it's nice to be discussing who wants to be the secretary tonight. Well, we'll discuss it. All right, thirty sixty ninety day plan.
So once again, tasks to the thirty sixty ninety, ninety day plan for the district for your review. And put on file. Just a couple of things going on.
So do we have it in ad hoc maintenance committee?
Uh, I have received a number of responses for that event that will be taking place next week at five PM. Uh, actually Monday, uh, the fourteenth at five PM, so.
Do, since I'm technically on the maintenance facility committee, is that something that I need to be at or?
You, you do not need to be at, but unless, unless we have a quorum there, I, I would encourage you guys to participate. If, if you do, if you, but notify me. If, if we do reach that quorum, I mean, then, then we have to post that.
And you're on, I mean, I don't think we have separate committees anymore.
Yeah, no, it was. And I don't know if we ever did anything with that or if we needed to do anything with that.
Nope. Nope. Uh, strictly being, being ad hoc, it is a particip- participation. And I need to get that out to staff as well, so.
Okay, any other further questions on the sixty ninety day? Okay. Liquidation of school vehicles.
All right, I put this on our, our log because we've got at least one van that we're concerned about as far as what, what are the next steps with them. Uh, the two thousand seven Free Star, uh, put on there because we're concerned about what, what repairs were necessary for it to be running appropriately. Uh, Mark was able to take some action on it and was able to do some minor repairs and it's, it's operable at this point in time for short trips in and around the district here. But with the two thousand five Caravan, that's also at a point where we need to look at disposing it in some fashion. And I wanted to get clear guidance from the board as to what, what does this look like? And, and you know, what, how do we approach this topic? You know, if, if we get to a point where we have a vehicle that needs to be liquidated in some fashion, how do we want to conduct that and, and you know, and then getting specific with this?
If we liquidate both of these, are we okay on vehicles?
We haven't generally, when we've purchased new vehicles, we've generally eliminated something and we have not the last four we've got. We haven't.
So we have plenty of vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, I would say just to put it up for sale.
Do a bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, do a bid.
Honestly, right now, they'll probably get, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars bids for them, honestly. With the way the used car market is.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we could just solicit bids by a certain date, sealed bid, and whoever bids the highest.
Right. I, I, I wasn't sure with, with vehicles of, of this age and caliber, if that, if that was the direction you guys wanted to go off of, off of marketplace type situation, but I would figure it out.
Two thousand two, so.
I, I get it.
I don't think they're that old.
They, it's not old, it's, these, these vehicles are in rough shape. I see them.
Yeah, and well, the other thing too, may, we, if we do a bid, we probably need to, I don't know if we want to use it in a line bid or have a day or two where they're available for people to look at.
I mean, we have a Facebook page, we could do the marketplace thing, I guess. So, I mean, is there anything that would stop us from doing that?
Uh, no, as long as we have, uh, you know, the parameters on it, I mean, we can advertise it that direction and just have-
Might be easier, you get a larger crowd to see it.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I'm open to different things. I, I would say that a, a vehicle or, or an item of greater expense, you'd want to have bids out there for sure.
Yeah.
But it just, throwing this out.
If we're going to put it on Facebook, which is fine, Marketplace, but then we probably need to tell it at least a base price.
Right.
I would let Mark just figure that out.
Right, and we, we can, we can take a look at what, what fair market value is going for.
Yeah.
So, we can utilize that. So.
So they take the meeting?
Just send it in here?
By point, so.
Yeah.
One point.
And, uh, once again, it's, there's just a discussion and I think we can come up with a clear path. I can come up with some more information and we can make a decision at our board meetings, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Onto, uh, international learning trip, Greece and Italy.
So, uh, I was hoping that Jen would be here to go over this.
She actually sent me an email. Do you want to hear what she had to say?
I have to save it.
Yeah, I gotta remember that. Only PDFs come up. Without saving it, so. Don't really forget that.
Because she, because she didn't think you were going to be here, so she had emailed it to me and I just bring it out, so. Good evening, I've decided to head up the educational trips that were in the past supervised by Lydia Lewis and then Bruce Myers. We are planning a trip to Italy and Greece for the spring break of two thousand twenty-six. This trip would be open to students that would be in high school at that time, parents of students and staff members. Explorerco manages all the aspects of the trip and I've included a link if you would like to look at the itinerary. The trip is approximately four thousand per person and can be, be paid for in a lump sum or they also offer a payment plan. I would also like to do fundraising with the participants to elevate some of, alleviate, sorry, some of the costs. I would like to hold an informational meeting for all who are interested soon. Please let me know if you have any questions. My daughter and I participated in a similar trip to this one a couple of years ago and it was amazing. I pitched the idea to most of the students that would be eligible and there was a lot of interest. Thanks for taking time to consider this amazing opportunity for our students. Um, one other thing in addition to this would, um, be that she would need to set up a, um, activity, if this is approved, an activity account for the fundraising. So we would, that would need to be approved too.
Is this the first time overseas though?
No.
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 We've done this, Brittany, you've done this before too, didn't you?
Years ago, yeah.
I went, I went twice with the girls. It's, it's an amazing opportunity.
And when, when was the last time?
Um, they went the year of COVID.
Yeah.
Um, I'm trying to think if Bruce went, one other one after that. Linda was at. Did you go to the one after?
I did, March, uh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. So, it, it's been a few years here. Um, I will say that, um, it's, it's, it's interesting that, that we have it on, on the spring break or it's being planned for that. But then, uh, having been there in, uh, July timeframe, it's probably a good thing because it's a little bit cooler, so.
And that's pretty much all the ones that I've seen, because they've always been during that, that same timeframe.
Right.
And it's ten days, so it would be beyond, um, spring break, but it's also that, trying to work it in between the, um, sports.
Right.
And that's not Easter only week?
Uh, no, it's, it's early in, in March. We, we don't have an early Easter that year, so. Um, I mean, it's a good question, but no, it, it doesn't fall within that realm. I, I hear what you're saying. I'm, I'm just used, my, my experiences elsewhere is, uh, these trips usually take place in June timeframe. So, it's just different, but.
Yeah, well, we've had a few, like, the Washington DC ones and things like that.
That one usually is during summer.
So any students in a college course, this would be a difficult trip?
It could make it a little more interesting and it'd have to be some coordination with, with, uh, their educators or their teachers. The, I'm not sure how it lines up with, you know, the different colleges as well, so. And once again, this is planned for twenty-six, so, anyway.
So are we in think about it mode or?
Yeah, no. This is, this is truly our, our, our discussion point here. I think, you know, I, I guess my, my question is, you know, are there any questions that we need to take a look at, you know, before our, our meeting here at the end of the month? Because I, I know that one thing that Jen was saying is that the, uh, the travel company that she's working with is really trying to push her to get locked in now. Right, well, yeah, I get it, but.
Discounts that you can get by a certain date.
Right, so, there, there are advantages.
Do we, in the past, have we had a requirement for certain staff to go or?
No.
Just kind of a loose?
I, I think this is, we, we, we do, and, and this is going to be based off of our numbers, so. And I, I would say we would have at least a minimum of two staff members that would be attending.
And they would, are we paying for them or are they paying themselves?
That's, that typically isn't part of it.
Not sanctioned by the school.
So are these absences then? The kids are- It's during spring break, they'll-
And the days, the other days, they make up their work.
Yeah. Well, no, well, but I mean, it's, it's a ten day trip over a-
Right, no, this, this would fall within excused absences here. Because it's a planned, planned event and whatnot, so.
But if it was a school trip, somehow it wouldn't even be an absence, it would just be a school.
That is correct. You'd, you'd have attendance and it would talk to that, so.
Can we do that? Or by doing that, because it opened up a host of other monkey-
Right, I would just caution doing that, so.
By the way, I apologize, I'm with Mr. Jen.
No, for what?
You're late.
You're late. So I'm not worried. All right, further discussion at our October meeting?
Yeah, if, if there's any questions or anything that you'd like me to pursue before that time, so.
Any particular reason why we're, other than the weather, we're doing this in March rather than when school is, was, when school was done or? I mean, school's not done in-
You know what, it's, it's, it's probably more tradition that we've done this more. Well, I've been here twenty years, so over twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They primarily have done it over eat, or Easter break or spring break, so then they're not, so, because it does go a little longer. The trip goes a little longer, so it does cut back into when school starts, so they're not missing as much school. So that's why they kind of plan them around.
I guess that timeframe might be a cheaper time to go versus in the summer. Now, I don't know that for a fact, but.
Check. I, there might be some reality to that. Like I said, with, with my, my experiences elsewhere, the, these trips are planned for that summer timeframe. Uh, I think one benefit of this, having it at, at that spring break time, is that it doesn't interrupt summer, you know, with employment or, or other activities that are-
Family vacations, so.
Honestly, that doesn't sound like a bad price for a ten day trip through Greece and Italy, including flights?
Flights and then, um, the tours and breakfast and the supper every day.
Yeah.
That's, that's a darn good price for four grand.
Having done a, a similar trip a few years back, yeah, that's a pretty decent price, so.
Well, if they joined the Navy though, they could see the world for free.
You'd kill me.
No, oh, just checking.
They don't always get paid for it, they get to go see it.
Yes.
Credit to, uh, to Jen for taking lead on this.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Policy updates.
All right. So as always, first reading of a bunch of wonderful policies, super exciting. A number of them are, are updates as we go through, uh, talking about, um, you know, class rank. It's just clarifying, uh, what exactly that is. There's, um, nothing as far as choices, but recommended updates to that. Fifty, fifty-four sixty, the graduation requirements. It's adding on the GTO program actually to our policy. We've already accepted that program, uh, through Northwood Tech. Uh, we've had a few students go through it. It actually puts that into policy and, uh, highlights exactly what we have been doing, so.
Did we do anything on the whole volunteer thing or anything, or is that not part of this?
No.
We'll be getting it.
Okay, we'll be getting to that because I've got a few questions to clarify there, so. District credit cards, just an update to that. Sorry, going over the top of this. Assistive technology and services, uh, very much an update, uh, talking about IEPs and the use of assistive technology when it comes to students with disabilities. Uh, the first one is food services, eighty-five hundred, that has a few different choices on there. And this goes in line with the wellness policy that, uh, that you, that the board approved back in July. Uh, and it's just highlighting, um, when we're talking about food services and contractors, uh, making that recommendation that, uh, we're providing a, a copy of policy and implementing guidelines to our vendors. And then, uh, also when it comes to substitute or accommodations, uh, that, that approval process. There's a couple of different, uh, items here. So making sure that the food service director or Jen gets that, that accommodation initially. Uh, if there's a, uh, if there's a denial, the, the steps that need to be taken there. So, those are the three selected choices that. Sorry. And then just some revisions on the back. Free and reduced meal prices. I think the only thing that was added on there was to seek out, uh, and apply for federal, state and local funds. So it's checking that for sure, so. Okay. Uh, vending machines, make sure that they operate the way they're supposed to.
So, my favorite topic for tonight, so how have we in the past decided what we have for vending machines? Because it looks like we have a water and Gatorade and that's it.
Right, and that, and it's following, uh, the guidelines that were established by the USDA a number of years back.
Right, so you can't have items that compete with the cafeteria.
That's correct.
But, but I-
But you also can't have pop and things like that during the day.
But you can have other food or whatever, I, granola bars or whatever. We don't have anything. And I know a lot of other schools do have those.
I know back in the day, it was the student council that ran a lot of those, but.
Right, now, it seems like we just kind of contract with a vendor and that's it.
Typically, that, that's what happens. And, and I would say that there are some districts that have snack vending machines, but I would say a, a number of buildings in, in districts that I've been in, I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
Or if they did have them, they took them out and didn't replace them because of the changeover in law, so.
So if the student council or something came out and said, hey, we want to get another vending machine besides water and Gatorade?
There, there is a possibility. I know that you, you guys would have to have that proposal brought in for, in front of you and making sure that, that it, uh, complies with law and policy.
Right.
So.
We used to have a couple of other vending machines, but because of the changes in the, in the requirements that they took them all. Plus, we were having a hard time finding vendors that would come in and, and maintain them. But it, it came down a lot to what we could have in there, what hours we could have them operational.
Right.
So a lot of times we couldn't even have them operational during the school day. And then if you have them operational during the games, you have to, um, that's called selling their stuff so they watch.
Right, I mean, so we sell stuff during games, but we don't have anything available during any other time, which, of course, I don't know. I mean, we don't seem to have any free time built in anymore, or study hall, or, um.
Right, it, it's tighter and then also just, just with management piece, it can be challenging in that sense. But it's not saying that we can't look at other options as long as it falls within the, the approved policies.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're not going to have macaroni and cheese and a vending machine or whatever the cafeteria sells.
Right.
Anything other than what a normal lunch.
That kind of figured out right around when I graduated, there was that law that came through the government. It was basically federal government says you can't have this and this and this. And it was all about obesity factors and stuff like that.
Right.
Couldn't have the chips.
Because we used to have an ice cream dispensing machine, ice cream bar dispensing machine, and I, that was used a ton.
And then they quit coming and filling it. We never, we had the machine and nobody came down.
Because of the rules.
Yeah.
There was only certain things they could put in there. They had like gluten free, dairy free.
She said we have a machine?
They had the, the time set up for after school, but then the company quit coming.
They just quit coming.
Because it wasn't, I think it wasn't worth it to them to just have it on the-
So we, we can certainly-
Yeah, because there were certain hours it was off too.
I mean, assume there was a, an existing vendor for the machinery out there now.
So, um, and, a- as you mentioned this, John, you know, the, the, the one that's on there, the competitive food sales, uh, the, the, the policy that you, that we've had on board has already said that shall be the sole provider of food and beverage items sold in the school until thirty minutes following the last period. So I mean, so there are, are certain timeframes that it can and can't operate.
Yeah.
And then other guidelines that we'll have to figure out as far as what can be sold.
Okay.
So, there, there's ways-
We'll have to, I guess we do nothing until someone makes a proposal to move forward, so.
That's it, so.
That's fine.
I think that's wise. Okay. All right, so getting into the, the next one, uh, it's just update to the competitive food sales. Just making sure that a nondiscrimination statement and then information about the USDA is added. The one that, um, just maybe a, a little more discussion on, or maybe some guidance, is the eighty-six hundred with transportation. Some addition that they want to put on there is non-ut, non-routine use of school buses. Uh, I will say that other locations, um, have used bus or school transportation for non-district events. And this is, this addition is kind of dealing with that situation.
So not, not our extracurricular or our athletic?
That's correct.
Kind of like when I was in Bayfield this weekend and they ran a, two school buses as a shuttle, shuttle for it.
Right.
And we've done that for the concerts in the park. That used to be a lot more frequent when the concerts were bigger down there. Um, this was the first year that they, that we didn't do that out during the white sidewalls in the past. They've hired us to, to provide transportation during the concerts.
Right, uh, other ideas, not saying that it's going to happen, but if, if through our community ed, we, uh, provide a, an opportunity for people to go to, uh, say Chanha, Chanhasan Dinner Theater, you know, and, and we utilize district bus, you know. It's, it's gone through, it would go through community ed, but it wouldn't be a district event, you know. So that, that's where this would fall in, that you're using the district transportation, taking care of the fees and costs and whatnot through that, through that, uh, event, you know. But making sure that we have the right parameters of it, so.
That's even like when Dale has gone on the, um, the DC trips, then they, they have hired a driver in the bus to take them down to the airport and pick them up. Because that, his, his DC trip is not a school sponsored event, so they have hired the-
What, what's the approval process for a request?
Well, and that's, that's some of the stuff that we have to go through and that's what it's asking about is, is the guidelines. We, we would obviously have to establish guidelines and, you know, what, what is it that we're looking for? You know, with A submitting a, a request, what is the approval process and what are the things that we need to manage? Okay, so. And that's that, I guess that's where I'm, I'm asking for just a little more information as to how we want to approach this, so.
Okay, so. I mean, I have no problem with it if they're paying for it. I, it says whenever possible an employee of the district. I would say it would have to be an employee of the district.
We'd want a-
I don't, I don't care, yeah. I don't care if they've got a CDL and they've been driving a bus for thirty years. I mean, it has to be.
Although on rare occasion.
Or what, are we talking school buses or are we talking?
Yes, it's a school bus.
It's only school buses, right?
School buses, because on rare occasion, like, um, I was trying to think, one of the sporting events, and I think that was when Norwood was, didn't have their own buses. Norwood did not, one of their buses, bus drivers, because we did not have enough drivers, one of their bus drivers used one of our buses to transport the kids to an athletic event.
Yeah, it, it, it gets into that conundrum, but I, I, I think, you know, getting, getting more guidance from you guys, I can, we can draft up, you know, guidelines and, and come back to this.
Yeah, because a lot of teeth when they don't work for you and they're transporting our students.
Right.
It's one thing to rent the bus out.
Check, that that's that's it.
I think what you're saying, Brad, they have to be, somebody who's been driving the school bus.
Right.
Now, if we know that person comes from another district, like our neighboring district, we know they're, we're short on drivers.
They have a bus driving.
Yeah, not just.
But okay.
Hey, man, you got your.
My whole thing is, what happens if they're driving our bus and they get in an accident, who is liable?
Right.
So that's where I'm where.
Because it's our bus, so it would be our insurance.
It'd be our insurance, and then what does our insurance say about us using a non-employee?
It would be the same thing as when we have a non-employee driving our vans.
Yeah. We we can dig into this and with bus drivers, I think we can go.
Information.
Right, I think we can look at ways of vetting people for that driving piece and.
Well, I think the type of event too, I mean, I I don't think it would be a good idea for our school bus to be sitting in a casino on a, you know, casino trip or something.
No.
Well, yeah, that's.
But but that's where.
But we don't have any left or right now.
Check, but that's what I'm saying, with 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 establishing guidelines, we can we can narrow what this looks like and provide the parameters.
Yeah, and I'm okay like doing a shuttle service for like perk thing, as long as it's an employee. That that's where I would say it has to be an employee. Like if we're if we're doing the whole when we're sharing sports, that to me is a little bit different, I guess, because
It's also transferring.
It's transferring both sets of students.
Both sets of students.
You're transferring Northwood and Tolen, so I could see that a little bit more. But I can't see, say, a former bus driver of ours that don't no longer works for us saying, hey, I'll drive, you know, for the shuttle. I I wouldn't want that necessarily.
I'll drive the bus load to the casino.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because one of our next policies is a, you know, drug and alcohol testing for our drivers. It's hard to hard to do that when somebody doesn't work here.
Yeah.
But if they work for like Minon, they would probably have, I believe they have that too.
Well, yeah, we could say, can you produce your drug testing?
Well, that, yeah, it's one of those, but we never, like, when we hire teachers, we never say, well, they used to work for this district, so they must be okay. We always do our own reference checks.
Yep.
Yes.
So I, I don't know, Brad, Fred, I think you're onto something here, just.
But the thing there too is we have substitute teachers that.
We reference check them though, I don't know.
We do it in the background, okay.
Yeah, we do background checks.
Once they've had it though.
Drug and alcohol testing and we do every.
We don't do it every time.
I just, there's a value in saying, well, let's just go through the process, we have a process for a reason.
The only thing is in I can complain devil's advocate, is like that situation where we had the Northwood bus driver, that was a last minute thing. There wasn't time to go, okay, we need to have you drug tested before we do this. And and that person was an active driver for Northwood at that time. So they were in the same perimeters that we do that, they were on a random draw, you know, drug testing and and.
Right, whatever is required to have CDLs.
The same requirements that that our staff, so it wouldn't be like you knowing how to drive a bus. And in in those cases are rare, but yeah, you don't want to just have Joe Blow coming in.
It's having the kind of policy that allows allows you to see that without being used in discrimination.
And and having something you can rely on is always good, so versus willy-nilly decision.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Excellent, all right, next one is eighty-six oh one, so it 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 was formerly forty-one sixty-two, and it's also taking the place of the rescinded, or actually have a rescinded policy eighty-six fifty-one. That was rescinded because it was incorporated into eighty-six hundred, so I apologize, that's where that turnover is. But with controlled substances and alcohol policy for employees that transport students, moved it to the eighty-six hundred versus the four thousands, the four thousands is support staff, and this is just a district-wide deal. Some updates to some of the numbering and the words. One thing I did not check is that undercover employees, the policy also applies to other staff members who drive students in the district vehicles or inspect service or condition of or condition district vehicles. I would say, yes, we want to have that checked. And then also on page number two, any staff member who tests positive as defined in the guideline shall be, and I would say having all four of those checked. Okay, and then and then the last one we had was eighty-six sixty, which was transportation by private vehicle for district-sponsored activities, and it just gives a little more clarification as to when that should and shouldn't be, just some updates with wording. And then I did check of the parent of an approved driver. I I would still like to look at making sure that we're confirming that these people in some sense have been vetted, so.
Well, that, and you want to make sure they have insurance, because.
Right. So does this kind of come into play when we're, someone's driving, an extra kid going to football practice down in Minon?
I could see just kids driving from here down to the baseball field.
It it would cover all of that, so. I know that we had a little situation trying to get clarification last year with football and and students grabbing rides with other students to Northwoods for practices and whatnot, saying, we need to have parents check off on this because I'm not okay allowing this to go to a specific.
Not just popping in the car and going.
Right.
Right, mom and dad gotta be aware of it.
Check, and and that's where, you know, coming into this, where we're we we're we're pushing off that liability, because there's only so much we can control and cover, making sure we have our bases covered in that sense, so. I think this provides that liability coverage, so.
One question on the opening paragraph that's in green.
Yeah.
So if I, is this discouraging parents bringing their kids home from away sporting events?
No, it it no, it isn't, because with 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 that, and I I'll double check with coaches, we we have, we should have parents sign up that they're taking.
Well, it's the language, students are expected to use such transportation for the duration of the activity.
Right.
So.
The, yeah, so this would be the exception, but and I think it usually is just a sort of eye contact with the coach or whatever, hey, I'm gonna take my kid. Okay, right.
Well, that's all they do, I'm just making sure we're not.
Right, no, it the the expectation is that we are using district transportation as much as possible because it, we we have that liability coverage when we do that. But if we don't, then this, these are the parameters behind how.
Just maybe try this.
Right, no, I I appreciate that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well done.
All right, moving along.
All right.
Hall walking with practices and expectations.
All right.
Whoever thought we'd have that?
Yeah, so I will say that this was something that, you know, I I've I've seen that in in other districts where we open up a building or facility for, you know, community members to walk, exercise, et cetera. But it was the first time that I had seen it where community members were allowed to come in during the regular course of a day, which I'm I'm not really comfortable with.
That was that was new.
I wonder why we even allow that. Yeah, so I I I wanted to make sure that it was brought to your attention and that you that the board could provide some guidance and parameters as to when we can do this.
Because there's the key fob thing, so they can't get in.
Right, that that's exactly right. The other piece of that comes into play is we have a system that can lock and unlock our doors at specific times.
Yes.
And I think if if we're allowing this practice, we can offer specified times and the doors are open at that time.
To those.
Do we have a rough idea how many people utilize this?
I I would say that it was very few.
Actually, we used to have, before COVID, we had.
I'd say there's probably twenty people.
Twenty people there.
A lot that used the weight room.
Right.
And probably at least a half a dozen that came and walked on a regular basis.
They didn't use it during the school day, though, did they?
No, it was always after.
That was only half an hour, so when we did it during the school day, that was a little awkward to me.
Yeah, no, we.
Yeah, I didn't even realize.
I don't think we should.
I don't know.
Don't either, he else feels.
I agree with you. No, I would agree.
I don't remember.
Times have changed.
Yeah.
When we did, when we had it open, there wasn't.
And I think that was kind of after COVID because doors were always locked and we weren't, we still, and that was just for the walkers. I don't think, Linda, did we open up to the weight room? I didn't think we opened the weight room.
It was just, it was just the walkers, and the majority of our walkers during school hours were senior citizens, but times have changed and we need to think about.
They can walk after three-thirty.
Yeah, they can walk after three-thirty or five o'clock or whatever it is that we set a rule.
Or we could do early work, it could be six AM until.
Yeah, we did that at one time, we did the six until this time, and then they, schools, nope, in session then after school until this time.
And that and that's where I just wanted to provide those parameters, because if you look at the form itself, it says, for time of use, school open eight AM to five PM unless other arrangements are made, so.
So are you looking for the board to I don't know, codify the boundaries here? Or is this something that as an administrator, you're just gonna give a sense of the board and make a wise decision?
How however it wants to be done, because I I mean, I can make a decision for the board. Once again, I where I work for you, I carry out the the board's wishes and and make determinations based on guidance. And if that's all I'm given is guidance, I can develop that. But I also, it's it's the board's decision and option on how this wants, how you guys want to carry this out. If you guys want to have it locked down, which I prefer not having people here during the day, because I think it's a safety issue and also information issue, because I I can't guarantee that FERPA is being followed if you have non-staff people in the building.
Right.
Right? So that there's two different things that I am not comfortable with. That's that's one thing, but then also what what do we want to see? Because we we have that option to open the school doors, eh eh, you know, at at certain times. Is that a lot, is that acceptable, you know, from from your perspective? And if that is, when is that? Are are we comfortable with, you know, we have an after-school program that operates until five? What are what are your thoughts on that? I'm I'm kind of on the fence, I'll be honest, because you don't have the same number of people here and it's, you know, with that after-school program, so I don't know.
In the world I work in, we have, we we have to develop child protection policies.
Yes, you are correct.
And part of that is, like, when a parent drops their kid off in our building, there's an assumption of safety.
Right.
So that this is working out in real time, but we essentially say this building's off limits to the general public because any adult in this building, we want to know who they are and where they are, and make sure they go through our safety protocols.
Right.
We can't do that. If we've got little kids here for after-school program, I think we need to err on the side of caution.
Yes, and and I'm I'm totally cool, I'm, correction, I am just fine with that decision because I, but but I wanted to, you know, get the board to weigh in on what what is your comfort?
The other, why would you be opposed to just eliminating it altogether? I mean, we need to, I don't know why we, it just sounds like an odd thing that, you know, I I get like at when they, at the Model America, they open it up at six in the morning, people walk all over, well, it's a commercial establishment. Why we want anyone here to just exercise their legs? I mean, it's a great thing, but I just don't know, you know, do we even need to be doing that at all?
I I think it it being a a community entity and a community facility, I think there is some value in having that opportunity. Because we do have individuals that are are, you know, well-seasoned and and having that opportunity in in some of our months where the weather isn't great and and the safety isn't great. I think it provides an opportunity for those individuals to, you know, actually get some exercise and and get out and about, have that opportunity to meet up with friends or whatnot a- a- at a safe place. But it's the timing that that I'm concerned about, you know, because anyway, a- as I look at it, i- if if you have individuals that 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 are past retirement age, going out in the winter and trying to take a walk down the road, is there more risk in falling and injuring themselves at that time? Yes, and that's why I'm saying during those months, I think it's wise for us to to provide some type of option, but provided those limits make sense, yes.
And and we usually have a day, I mean, we don't necessarily want a tournament of supervisors, but we have custodial staff here in the evening after students are gone.
That is great.
So, I mean, that would probably be an optimal time.
We used to do.
And I don't know how early people, I mean, we need somebody in the building.
We used to have the key fob.
They they, Linda, help me with this one, so they used to fill out an application to be able to, and then they would get a key fob and they would pay a ten dollar deposit.
Not for the walkers.
Not for the walkers, that's what I was trying to think, that was just.
And background check and then they, well, during the day, we let them in, they came and checked in, signed in. They said they were going to be here for however many minutes, and I said, you know, we always checked them in and they go and do their walk and then they checked out with us. Most of them were maybe thirty minutes, if that, and they just walked the loop. And we, it's our screen that the kids would be in and out. There is a confidentiality sheet that they all had to sign, so that if they heard something or saw something, that stays in the building. As far as the fobs, the fobs were only issued to the people did the workout program.
Yes.
And if they wanted to use the gym to shoot some baskets or, we had a couple that did that. Well, since they moved the workout, that has been off limits now. All the fobs have been suspended, we didn't give them back, we just suspended them. But what Pete was talking about is when we had it open during afternoon, it would open up at three-thirty and it would close at eight PM, and that also have with all of the sports practices and people coming and going. And if there's nobody in the office to open that door, you know, then that was why it was keyed open, or not keyed open, but programmed to to open. But as far as the walkers, they, two years ago, they started that program to walk during the afternoon or during the day while we were here. And that was just something, and we had five or six of the.
What would these say, the average age of these people were?
What's that?
Average age of these people, you know.
They were elderly, you know, and and a lot of them during the winter when the roads were horrific and very icy. But they were very appreciative. I don't think, my opinion, if we changed the hours, they would not have a problem with that.
So when somebody fobs in, is that logged?
It is logged.
Yes.
So why don't we just fob everybody that wants to come in and they have to pay that?
It's just an additional thing, it's an additional thing to keep track of.
Yeah.
But you're covered then.
I don't have a fob, I mean, why, and then we're gonna give someone who just wants, I mean, I'm not casting a version on.
They still have to go through all that.
People that walk, but still.
Then they're then they're filling out the application.
But they're still going, they're still filling out the applications and that.
Yeah.
Those that fill out the applications and want to use it, they have to go through that application, and then we'll get a fob. That way, when they do come to the building, we know when they come in.
What do you think, Brittany?
I was just gonna ask, what time is after-school actually complete? Like after-school program. I guess just in regards to safety, I would say anytime after five would be appropriate for any community member to enter. I mean, if I had little kiddos, mine are in high school, but if I had little kiddos, I would want to know that the building is secure.
And we wouldn't be able to do the mornings because they have the, they have staff in here that are here for kids that want to come in early and do the weight room in the morning. But I'm, is it, I'm not sure if it's open, is it open Friday also, so like after-school is not on Friday?
Well, no nothing's established, right, so.
I would be, I think you've, I would be curious if you would come up with some guidance. And I don't know that we need to sign this at a board level, I think you would want to get involved.
I this is more of trying to get a gauge of where you guys are.
What about weekends?
I would say that that would be off limits simply because of the opportunity to have staff here and.
All right, no, that's, I was just wondering.
Yeah, because the the. Yeah, because the, the other thing that, that, you know, crosses my mind and not saying that it has happened, but I, I would know, I, I would say that some of our, our facilities, our outdoor facilities, uh, have, have been victim to vandalism. And, and we, we also have to be cognizant of the time and durations that we have the building open.
Well, I mean, if you have a fob system that they have to fob to get in, other than obviously game nights, you're gonna have a door open.
Right, yeah, it, uh, some stuff that we'll think about, because what, what did come to mind is, you know, having that time where we'd have doors open when, when there is, you know, some type of staff member here. You know, if, if we look at like a, a six to seven thirty AM and then a five to eight PM, I, I think that provides windows and, and clar- clarification.
What time is our janitorial staff here at night?
Uh, past that, so.
Okay. Yeah, generally, Dave, because I've actually forgotten things up here after Dave ran back up at ten o'clock and the door is still unlocked because they're going in and out, in and out with trash cans and garbage, so.
And some nights are to janitors, if there's not a game or anything, sometimes they don't both, neither of them get here till later if they have things going either. So it's not guaranteed that, that there's going to be a custodian in the building, but that's rare.
Do, do you feel like you've got enough information from us, from the board to put policy in or out of practice?
Yep.
Excellent.
Alright. Okay. That brings us on to early college credit programs.
Alright, so, early college credit, uh, it's a good question that, uh, John came up with before we got started. Is we've got early college credit and Start College Now. Early college credit is truly credits going through UW Wisconsin syst- or UW system, um, a- and getting credits versus Start College Now, which is, uh, our Northwoods Tech.
Well, one of those says Northwoods Tech.
Yeah.
Start College Now.
It, it is the, it's essentially the same in the fact that you're, you're approving, uh, district funds to cover the cost of these, uh, courses.
So, I, I was looking, they don't, they don't include a cost on this form, I mean, how, are we paying for it?
I forgot exactly what it runs.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't have a cost because it varies with what college they're going to and whether it's a two-credit or a three-cred- credit course sometimes, so there's not, the cost is not always consistent. We just say that we cover a maximum of eighteen credits for a student over there.
I would hope nobody's taking eighteen credits while they're in high school.
We have had a few.
My daughter's taken nine in one semester.
The, the caveat to it is, it has to be courses that we do not, it's courses that we do not offer here or through Amelax. It has to be something very specific where they're getting to a credit, so.
Well, I'm hesitant to approve something we don't even know the cost of. I mean, once someone says, okay, I want three credits for this class, I mean, this, the university should be able to tell them what it's gonna cost. And, and.
Well, basically statewide, are we not required to provide at least up to eighteen credits?
Right, but still, we don't even, I don't know what three credits costs.
Right, but we can't.
Doesn't matter.
We can't say, no, you can't go because.
Because the law says we, if they turn this in, okay, as long as we have to let them.
We're required, well then, why do we approve, why do we need to approve them if it's triple?
Because it's a law, so that's.
We're required. And while we're, we, we gotta make sure that they're not courses put here.
Right.
And I don't know what the other part of it is, but.
So, so retaking courses that, that a student might have failed or not completed would be one reason.
To disapprove?
Dis- yes.
And would we know this on the application?
We would know this through our vetting process to bring toward, bring to the board for approval. Because we, we would, we have to go through that process to make sure it's not something that we offer already. And then also making sure that, uh, they have not attempted other courses and not successfully completed, so.
But the state is requiring the district to pay for college credits for cer- under certain circumstances?
That's correct.
And we're not, that just comes out of district's side, it's not.
Correct.
So it's one of those requirements without funding?
Correct, in essence.
Well.
We, we've seen that all the time, so.
Although now in the last handful of years, they have started where, um, we send in how much we have paid for, for courses and we've gotten a small reimbursement back. So like this year, I think we're getting, um, I think it's just four hundred dollars this year because we didn't have as many kids taking courses last year. The year before, I think it was eight hundred. So it's not a lot, but.
This is the most I've seen as far as courses.
Right, and there, and there are other ones as we start with the Start College Now applications. If it's along the lines of career and technical education and they're completing a course, there's actual grant monies that cover that cost as well. So, there are different methods of getting some of the funds back, so.
And then we also cover the cost of their textbooks, which they are supposed to turn back into the school. So if we have someone else that takes those courses, which I haven't actually ever seen that happen, but because ninety percent of the time, the colleges are.
New one every year.
It's a new one, yeah, we've updated our.
But some of these are online courses, won't have textbooks either.
So, good questions, Jim. Your government will work.
I felt the same way when I thought about that one.
Right.
I was like, wow, really?
Well, and it was quite a few years back when I brought that up, saying it is required by law, and I was like, oh, okay, so we can never really deny it.
Right, the, the other thing that is kind of interesting and, and we were talking about that ahead of time, but just getting clarification. So students, for instance, students that, um, live in our district that are open and enrolled out, uh, they technically have to be approved by us. It comes back to the District of Resonance likewise.
So, so that is one we could deny?
No, we, well, we would have to go through that process. I would say that we couldn't necessarily deny them, and, and I'll get more clarification on that piece, but that is not my understanding.
We'd have to have a.
We would have to have good reason.
One of those classes on there, we offer.
So.
It's like, if, if our kids, and I don't know if that person's an open enrollment, it's like our kids, our kids can take, my, my boys wouldn't be able to take that as a college course because we offer it in, in the building.
Right.
So that might be, we could stricken that one because they operate.
That's, that's correct.
And maybe that's just being ordered.
So does it also, would it also on their application, or do we just check our student rolls to see whether they're opting in, out, or whether they're going to school, or?
Uh, it, we, we would have record of where that, that student is and, and like the application, it, it gives that location. We would be contacting them, going through what's offered, what's not to.
Because I know what you're talking earlier for someone opting out, if we're thinking, well, we're not gonna pay for that, but then also if they're opting in, then it's their, the district's, their home district's responsible. So, I, it's kind of inconsistent.
Uh, no, I know, and, and I had to, to make sure I looked and it's, it's very clear on, on the DPI website, that process, so. We would be working with the district that they're open and rolled out to, but it still comes back to us as far as that approval process.
Is that very clear in the DPI website? Is that, is that a pure statement?
It's on there.
Is that anything true at all for DPS?
Sometimes, you're correct, but, no, it, it, it is, it is on there, so, anyway.
Okay.
Alright.
Early college, start cr- okay, start college now, this is different application.
Yeah.
And these are the North.
Alright.
This is a Northwood.
Right.
So was that other one supposed to be in this other one?
Yes.
Probably.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's, there, there, it, it comes down to the same process, it's just labeled differently because it's different schools. If that makes sense, so.
Yeah, so this one, one, it says, I don't know if this is lined out or just a line, or it says Northwestern High School.
Right. Yeah. That was just a caution on what we can't say, but anyway, um, but yes, that's where we'd be discussing that, so.
So are we saving these for board meeting?
Yeah, because I think we're missing a kid on there.
Okay, we'll double-check, so.
Good.
Wonder who that one is.
Yeah, and that's, that's one thing that we're gonna be working on when it comes to future stuff. Making sure we've got deadlines and meeting with Dustin tomorrow to, to lay out, this is the process and we need to make sure we're communicating this to families.
And some were probably, some were probably approved last spring.
Well, we, we should have had that, but.
Just for this first.
This is, yeah, we did, and then this is for the next sem- this is for the spring semester?
Yeah, this is spring semester, so.
That deadline's all too fresh in my head.
Excellent, alright.
Next Eagles Wings Virtual Handbook.
Handbook.
Alright, friends, so, uh, there was some mention about some irregularities. I went in and made those changes, I think.
There's a new one.
Huh?
There's a new one. This one still have, so for, um, on this handbook, I think it has the eighty hour.
It, it does, and we'll have to get some clarity on that, but it was approv- approved previously, so, so as we get. Right, as we get clarification, we're gonna have to see this again because it's gonna have to go through that whole process again. But I think for right this instant, if I, if I can get, you know, work on getting that approval from you guys on this one, and then as we get clarification on the volunteer hours, that would be awesome. And then also updating our school board representative, because we have not established that since our previous.
So this handbook requires the eighty hours?
Yes.
It still has that in there.
So can we actually just adjust the agenda items?
I, I would say, where, where I would say is this has to go back through that process again, because it has to go back to the governance board because it's operated through the governance board.
Right, so maybe they want it.
So, the, a- and what I'm asking is that temporary approval, so we have something here, but then we're going back as we're changing up stuff with the volunteer hours, that we can do, to collect updates on it. And go through that process again.
So, Pearson Learning?
Yes.
That's the program that people use that are doing virtual?
That is correct.
And online.
And on, well, the same thing.
Well, there's the virtual, the, there's the full-time virtual, and then there's the ones that have just a one or two online classes.
Well, yeah, that's our virtual school.
Okay.
This is a Pearson, that's correct.
And the district pays for that?
We have that, that is correct.
Okay.
Versus paying for teachers, so.
The persons, online are also under Pearson.
Versus, right, family that pays.
Well, somewhere, depending, what's that?
Versus also that a family might pay for that.
Can you just?
Well, so there, I, I, I know, uh, people in, you know, my recent past that have their kids go to the virtual high school, online, and they pay for that.
But are they enrolling in a private or public school?
They're not enrolling, they're in.
So, the problem there is, we don't get credit for them then.
We don't, well, what credit do we get now?
We get credit for it, it's like during, here, my daughter takes it and we get credit for her here, being here. Just as a regular student here would be, yes.
So we count them as our student if they're.
We do, but we don't have a funding piece from the state. Isn't that what we discussed last month? We count them on our overall.
We do, we do get, they are, they are included in what we get funded, so.
From the state?
Yes. So.
Because they aren't transferring in, it's not a lost thing, because they aren't transferring in.
Right.
I think we need to check that one.
Good.
I can tell you for certain when I do that.
So, so, are, are we talking about categorical state aid and the student allotment, or are we talking about something else here?
I'm talking about the same funding that we get for a student who is here, present in the building during school.
It is the same.
It is the same.
Exactly the same. And it doesn't matter if it's, i- it's the same whether it's a student that's in our district attending, uh, traditional classes, uh, and it's the same funding for open enrollment students that are attending your traditional.
Okay, because I thought when we discussed last month, I, maybe I misheard, but I thought you had said we don't receive state funding for homeschool.
Well, that's different, that's homeschool.
Homeschool is a totally different beast, they're not enrolled through us and they would be going through Pearson themselves and wouldn't be working through us.
Okay, but if they come through the district?
Right, where, I think where, where we're talking about is two classes, because it is in state law that we, we can allow or need to allow up to two classes for students that are open and enrolled. And yes, we're not receiving funds for those students. That's, that's what we were talking about is those two courses, not, not the entire coursework.
Well, I mean, if you're online, you're homeschool.
No.
Not in the same category. Homeschoolers don't follow the same curriculum as that's followed by the state.
Right, right, because I, that's why I was trying to get it distinguished last time, there's, there's people that homeschool that just do their own thing completely. And then there's those that go through the district.
Yes.
And it was.
But, right, so, so homeschooling, so here, here's what's happening. They have to fill out actual, uh, it's called Homer, uh, they go onto the system, they fill out that they're gonna be homeschooled a- and they are taken off the rolls of their, of their, uh, resident district. However, in state law, they can take up to two courses per semester with the district and not actually be enrolled in the district.
That's for the pure homeschool.
That is for the pure.
Pure homeschool.
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
Our virtual program, they are our students. They are enrolled as our students, and that's the only ones that are.
And fully funded.
That is correct, yeah.
Alright.
So, that, and that's, that's why I wanted to make, I don't think we're talking the same thing, but, but no, I appreciate that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway.
Yeah. Alright.
I got it.
Perfect.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get there.
We'll get there, okay, high school volunteer hours and graduation.
Alright, um, I know that, uh, the board took action last month. However, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up, just so we get clarity and then also look at, uh, how we want to proceed. This decision, the first question I have, is this taking immediate, so our senior, our current seniors do not have to fulfill that requirement? Next is, you know, what are the graduate creation requirements going to be for our students? And I said, I know we mentioned an optional half-credit, but now we have to go through and make sure that we cor- correct those graduation requirements. And I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear on that. And then the last one is, are we open to other ideas such as a capstone or a senior learning project or service learning days? So, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I also want to make sure I have absolute clarity on, on this topic.
Can you explain this situation to Brittany a little bit so she knows what you're talking about?
So, uh, since the early nineties, the, the school district has added in their policy and practice to have, uh, required volunteer hours for graduates and.
Which kind is an oxymoron, because it's not volunteer then.
Right, if you're, if you're required to do it. Uh, it, it came, came to head in some sense in the fact that we had a, a policy that said ninety hours and we had a handbook that said eighty hours, so we're trying to reconcile, and that's, that's where this discussion started. And, and I, I, I think there, there are some, you know, very legitimate reasons why, why the board made this decision and, and I'm fully supportive of it. But then, on the other hand, I also want to look at, are there ways that we can have our, uh, students involved in activities that support the values that we recently approved as well? Um, because a- as we take off volunteer, the mandatory volunteer hours, I, I, I think we're, we're missing something there as, as that, you know, engagement in the community and, and offering opportunities for all students, but.
First question, are we looking to fill a state requirement for graduation? Like, is this, or are you just saying, just kind of off the books, you want the kids to be involved in something, just because we are community members?
I, I think having something there would make sense.
Okay.
Our, our board, our, our district graduation requirements currently had it as a half-credit. They would receive a half-credit for that mandatory volunteer time.
But the volunteer time was not state mandated?
That's correct, it is not.
That was just a.
It was a district mandate. Basically, we were just taking the mandatory. Basically, we were just taking the mandatory out of it, still offering the half credit, I thought?
Yes, it's, it's an optional half credit.
Yeah.
Optional half credit.
But then, but then making sure it's clear that we're changing our graduation requirements to say that is not on the table as, as a graduation requirement, it is an optional half credit for that. Uh, so.
I would argue that it should be effective immediately, for those who already have their eighty, they'll, they, they can still get their half credit. So for those who maybe need five hours, they can do their five hours and get their half credit. And if they've got sixty-five, they're like, eh, I don't have to bust my butt trying to figure out how to get fifteen hours
Right.
to graduate this year.
Sure.
Um, so that, that's what I would recommend is that we, it's effective immediately.
Can you explain this capstone and all that a little bit more?
Right, so I, I just, so I, just throwing out different ideas, there, there are other districts that offer some type of opportunity for kids to dive into something that's more, uh, beneficial to engagement in the community and practices that could better themselves and the community. Uh, Superior has a, a senior project that, that they all do, um, and that is a requirement that they have. But it's, there's, it goes through an actual process where they have to develop, what does this project look like? They have to get approval to carry on with that project, and then there's a presentation at the end of that project. So it's very much like a course. I think Northwood also has something very similar, what's they call the capstone project, that all students engage in a project that is, you know, centered around the community and whatnot. So that's an option. Uh, if not that, asking for approval to, to establish, uh, service learning days where we establish a day, uh, where all members in the district are engaged, I would say middle school, high school. I don't know if I'd really get an elementary involved, but where we're involved in different, uh, activities and, and projects in the community.
Can you think of any example of what something like that might look like, what would be a service day here or not?
Right, so, uh, Shalik and Richmond, uh, the times that I were, I was there, we did, uh, different things. One, uh, one project that we had was working with, with, uh, DNR and local people with invasive species, uh, trying to eradicate some of that stuff. Painting, uh, different symbols in, in the community about important non-water stuff down the drains, you know, and, you know, so it's different things that we can look at within the community to involve them, so.
Be like having an earth day, we're gonna go and we're gonna pick up trash around the community.
It seems like where the, at a board level, where the, where the rubber meets the road for the board is when we make this requirement for graduation.
Right.
But when you, we have a mission and a vision that we're asking you to flesh out. To me, how you, if, if a service learning day is part of that, that doesn't, it's, it's not required, if, if a kid is sick on service learning day, it's not like you're gonna take away the birth date or.
No, it's not.
So I, I think this is, run with it, I don't think there's an approval.
I don't see a.
Well, it, it is and it isn't, because I, I, I wanna feel you guys out because we, we just went through a major change of volunteer hours.
Right.
We had it, now we don't, and I, I wanna get a good guidance from you guys as far as where we wanna go because the, the senior project and the capstone is essentially take, would take the place of that volunteer hours because it would be a course. Service learning, I get it, I can plan, we can plan that, no big deal, but I also wanna make sure that you're, you guys are okay with this. So that, that's why I wanted to make sure I bring this up, clarity on, is it done now? And, and we're, we're saying, doesn't matter if you, if you, if you have your hours, you're gonna get a half credit, if you don't, so be it. We're done, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so that, that, that was the first part, but then the second part is, what's the next step?
So, uh, John Zosel always takes what the senior class does, you know, in the spring, I mean, is that something that would count as a service day or?
That, that could easily be incorporated into a service, service day, yes. So.
It, it seems to me your, your question about capstone is really rolled into these other macro questions you're wrestling with on.
It, it's more of bringing it up to, to a direction that the board wants to go.
Because rigorous academic, academic rigorous was one of the values that we were yearning for, and if this is part of it.
Well, I don't think it's anything.
Well, then you have to make the decision, do you want a, a service learning day, which is great, Johnny showed up that day, we go out, we do the service day.
Days, I don't think it's just one day.
Days or days, yeah, days, versus the capstone would say, this is now our requirement, it is like a course, you have to complete this.
I'm not okay with that, I think I would rather do the service days, have a few here and there to kinda help them get in with the community.
If, if we did this, we would be looking probably on one day a year, cause that.
You don't wanna take a bunch of days from their.
Well, I'm not saying that much, but.
It, it, it's multiple levels because then you start to lose focus of actual academics and, because that, there's a fair amount of that work, of work that goes into coordinating that piece. Uh, also getting the appetite of, of our community leaders as well as trying to organize that piece. But once again, there, there's many different ways of approaching this if we, if we wanna have, uh, connected individuals, connected students with our communities, right? And that, and that's why I wanted to bring this and explore different.
I'm really intrigued by this, because unlike the current mandatory volunteer that has no oversight. Which, this has, this in theory can weave academic achievement into this, like I, I I think you're onto something special, I'd love to, yeah, let's, let's dream about it.
De-weeding a lake's got nothing to do with academics, I mean.
It, it isn't, uh, but, but it, it is looking at ways that we're connecting our students with the community and being a responsible community member.
I'd be supportive of a, a service day.
Okay.
I, I don't know, doing multiple days, now we're just, you're, we're going back.
And I think it's gotta be reiterated to these kids that, you know, the volunteer hours, yeah, they're not mandatory, you're gonna get the credit for them. But if you're looking to get scholarships, that's one big thing that scholarships look at.
Regardless of whether it's.
And you can tell your kid that, and someone else may say, don't worry about it.
And that's fine, but I think that, that all the kids need to know that, so they're, they're born to.
In other words, they need, it, they should be informed, here's a great way to earn half a credit, go do these eighty hours, and you get half a credit. You might have that kid go, I'd rather go out and do my volunteer hours and get my half a credit because I know I'm not a great A or B student here, but I'll go down, I'll go deliver wood with Ralph Gunnerson to senior citizens. You know, I'll load it in the back of the truck, drop it off at their house, great, I'll go down and, and bring chairs to the elderly during the summer during music in the park. It's a great way for them to get that half a credit that they might need.
It has also.
If they want it.
If they want it.
If the parents are supportive of it, but, um, you know.
It has also helped our community to get students to volunteer for things like the concerts in the park and things like that because kids knew that they needed that. So my fear a little bit is that we're also taking that away from the community because now kids are like, I don't need that for anything, so why would I do that? So I don't know if that.
Do you know how I hear that? I hear that's some type of misuse of power on our part as a school. As some type of extortion, we're not gonna give this to you unless you go, and I'm, I'm sure that's not the intent, but that feels really I, I, I just get.
Right, we're, it's, we're offering free labor to music in the park. And they, you know, they're charging tickets and, for tickets and it's a semi-commercial.
It's building. Well.
Did interview someone else's.
I'm sorry, I haven't.
I.
Anyway.
So.
How do, okay, okay, well, well, which way are we going with this?
So let's do number one.
Effect immediately?
All right, do we have, let's make a motion on that, each one of these. So Brittany, do you have enough understanding of what's?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Do you have any, well, we'll come to a point when you get any questions, yes, Pete?
No, sorry, I, I was just wondering, is, is this something that we, we wanna take action on tonight, or is this something that we wanna go over? There, there are pieces we can make action on that, saying that, yes, uh, this takes effect immediately and we're dropping our graduation requirements.
I, I think we could do one tonight, the other maybe we need to do a little more.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we could do them each individual, so the first one, we could make an action tonight.
Sure.
The other two, we could take some more time and think till.
Could, I don't have the minutes in front of me, cause I didn't see him embedded, can, I thought the motion last month was very clear.
It, it was, but I don't think it was like, when is it effective?
When is it effective, we did not discuss.
So I think that we just have need to.
I thought when we took mandate, when we removed the word mandatory, I thought that was kind of idiot.
Mandatory what? Is it mandatory at the beginning of this school year, or are we gonna wait till the next school year? Cause I can see people becoming confused in our communities, parents coming back saying.
This is more of a clarification.
Yes, I can see this happening because.
It's just adding that piece to it, cause I, I, I know exactly where it was because it said, uh, uh, ha- at half credit optional, but I wanna be absolutely clear and out to the public what exactly are we looking at, if that makes sense. So it's just adding that additional piece to it, so.
There's a difference between saying effective immediately versus this is our new policy, well, when did it roll out?
Right.
What day do we roll out, so, you know, so, and this just clarity to parents, students, all like, I, I think it's a great question. I think it's a good thing that we make that clarity, so.
Okay.
Cause you might like just say, might have a kid come to school, oh man, I got ten hours to go. And he might say, oh great, I don't have to do my ten hours, forget it, I'm not worried about my half credit. Might have that kid that, you know what I mean, with that kid that's so far behind, I only got ten in, geez, I got graduation, how am I gonna get something, I don't need to worry about it. So they need to know. All right, so, who would like to make this motion?
So I'll make a motion that the repeal of the mandatory volunteer hours be effective immediately. As of today.
Anyone want a second?
I will, I just wanna make sure that, that motion is specific enough.
All right.
Second.
Okay, John and Ben, further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those who proposed, motion passes, okay. So the other two, number two and number three, we will wait until next, our school board meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Or I, I would say number two, you, you can take, I, I would say you can take action on that if you're, if you're making this immediate, then you're.
Okay.
Oh, what, are there?
Yep.
Graduation requirements.
Okay, that makes sense.
Well, I mean, what is, what do you want for an answer to number two?
Just saying that it, with this effective change that our graduation requirements are now changed to take that mandatory half credit off immediately, so then our current seniors do not have to fulfill that requirement.
But they still have to fulfill the same amount of credits as required in the past, they just have to fill it with another class.
Of course, that's where they do their hours.
I'm not sure how to word this, Pete, as, so it, yeah, like, it seems like there's a real narrow slot that we need to word this in.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
If you would tell me what to say, I would be.
So, no, that, that the, that the graduation requirements, that that is eliminated for our current seniors and beyond.
I, I mean, I'll, so I would make a motion, uh, that the graduation requirement does not include any volunteer hours effective immediately.
Unless choosing to.
No, I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Okay, John and Ben, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, and we will save number three till the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
And then what we'll bring to the regular board meeting is the actual graduation requirements for credits, make sure it's absolutely clear on that too.
Check, yes, good idea. All right. Next, bus storage location, John's house.
Are we looking to move it?
Uh, we're, we're looking to have at least one, uh, bus located at a different location. A, it frees up some space so Mark can actually conduct, um, repairs and whatnot on vehicles in our bus garage. But then also if we have a safety correction, if we have an event here where we're not able to get back to our buses and this area is locked down, that effectively takes out all of our assets to move people.
So currently do our bus drivers drive here, pick up their bus out of the bus barn and then do their morning route?
That's correct.
And then bring it back at the end of the evening route and then the.
That's correct.
Barn or whatever we call it is completely full?
It is.
So when, when, when is maintenance normally, normally done?
Uh, during the normal workday.
I don't think that they bring, I think they bring them back right after the route, they're here all day.
Yeah, they bring them back immediately after.
And then they go bring them all again, they don't keep them the whole day.
So, so they're, they're here.
Okay.
Unless they're out on routes or, or on a trip. The, the other piece of this is you're, you're gonna be storing a vehicle outside of the barn or outside of the bus garage if you have a vehicle that requires maintenance over a period of days, so I mean, it's gonna be outside anyway. So I'm just asking.
Is it just to park it outside then, or at someone's?
At, at a different location, so it'd be outside, but at a different location, we would still conduct.
Do you have that location, are you secret about it, or is it just?
No, A, A, it's, can, can we do that?
Oh.
I'm, I'm asking for that permission for us, cause we, could we park it at?
To explore it, kind of?
Yeah, cause we could park it at, at, at Mark's home facilities, you know, and making sure that it stays there unless it's used for district purposes. I mean, we would have to make sure that that happens. Uh, but then it's also easy to access because he lives a very short distance away. So if we do have an event that we can't be here to get our buses or a bus for transportation, we can go there, get it and do that.
We just pay a nominal rate for storage?
In the past, he's not had, he paid anything.
It usually isn't, so. It usually isn't, so.
Um, are there any grants out there for a new bus garage? Cause I know that thing's older than old.
Well, that might be a topic for next Monday.
Okay, cause like, I'm thinking if we could get rid of the bus garage there and put it somewhere else, period.
Yeah.
That would get more parking room.
Off district property?
No, we have property, might be down the ro- you know, down by the baseball field down there, or the softball field, so.
Erosion ditch, fill it in.
We have a certain level of security with it here.
I, do you wanna motion on this today?
No, no, it's, I, I, I just wanna explore what the, you know, if we can do that or not. I mean, it's, it's not an immediate action item, but I just wanna bring that discussion up, you know, I, I've seen it where, um, you know, now, yeah, districts have their busing or their buses stored at a different location. Uh, Spooner, it's, it's a contracted service, but I know they don't know their bus, bus drivers to, uh, to take their buses home, do their route, so their, their, their residence or location is within their route, so it's not an additional cost per se.
So is there a reason we would have it at a, a non-bus driver's place rather than one of our normal bus drivers park it up there?
No, not necessarily, I mean, we would, we would wanna make sure that we have a good place or a good location to store it. Uh, I think there is some wisdom in having it at a location of one of our staff members, maybe, cause.
So, so if, if driver A has his bus out at Dolberg, now he, instead of coming to the district or here, he drives there to pick up his bus?
Generally, what has happened when we've done that is that is one of the backup buses?
Right.
Oh, so it's not one of our.
It's not, not in use.
This is just going to help Mark free up space so he can do maintenance daily, okay, instead of, cause I see what he does, he bring, he has to back out a bus, park it along the building or just back it out, move jockey that other bus around, do its work on it, jockey it back in place and now bring back in that other bus. So, cause our drivers come in the morning, go out do the routes, bring their buses back, come back in the afternoon, do the same thing. What we're saying is if you take one offsite, and I like the idea, if an event happened that they locked down this area for whatever reason and say we needed a bus to transport, maybe it's community members out of this area, maybe it's, the kids are down at the end of the road because we evacuated something in the school, we can hot get them in a bus and get them put, so it's kind of a nice idea, safety, that we always have a bus offsite for safety purposes. And we're not talking a regular driver, we're talking the one that would be the backup bus for all the buses.
But I appreciate if this is written broad enough that it could be, maybe a driver wants to take a bus home, like, let's make this wide enough.
Yeah, I, I don't think necessarily it has to be a policy per se, but it, it's also taking a look at, you know, the management of our, of our facilities and, and vehicles. the management of our of our facilities and and vehicles and whatnot, and and making sure that I get your approval to pursue that, so.
Yeah. I don't know about the rest of these things.
Okay.
So. All right.
All right.
Any closed session?
No, there is no closed session this evening, so.
I'll make the motion to be closed, adjourn the meeting at uh, what's that, seven thirty-five?
Seven thirty-five.
All right, all those in favor?
Brittany, you should second it.
Second, go ahead, Brittany.
Second.
Woo hoo, any further discussion on it, Brittany? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All right.
Well done.
Now she's gonna go home and go, what did I get myself?
I hope early on in the tenure, you get like the four-hour board meeting, no, just kidding.